Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I'm calling the December 5th City Council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we are still continuing to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx, and Councilmember Joe is one of those people. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite everybody to join in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next portion of our meeting is audience comments, and members of the public may address their council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three, and if you have joined by a computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire, if you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. For those who are making comments, please direct those comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your -- oh, for virtual attendees, when recognized, unmute your microphone. And for those in the room, please step up to the lectern in front of the council to address them. Please state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly, pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to join, rejoin the meeting if able. Personal texts, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, an in-room attendee, Dan Landis.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dan Landis. My address is 4427 38th Avenue South in Seattle, and I am here tonight speaking on behalf of King County Housing Authority. And more specifically, I'm here to talk in favor of the passage of AB 8495 related to the Tibbetts Valley Cell Tower and lease agreement, and as well as AB 8494, the inter-local agreement between the city and King County Housing Authority for the Transit-Oriented Development and Opportunity Center. We have been working with the city of Issaquah since 2017 to find a way that we could acquire the site adjacent to the Issaquah Transit Center. I've been here many times before you all, and I am very excited that we've finally reached this point. The city has been an invaluable partner throughout this process, and in the end, it was the city's willingness to come forward with a relocation site for the cell tower that exists on the TOD site that made it possible for this project or will make it possible for this project to move forward. It's been very tough negotiations both between the city and the cell tower owner, Vertical Bridge, as well as between us and Vertical Bridge, and us and the city, and us and Lumen, the owner of the site. We've all come together, and we've reached agreement on all of the major terms. And so your passing these resolutions is the next step in the process so that we can move towards hopefully acquiring the site still this year. Although much has changed over the years, our commitment to build a mixed-use, mixed-income transit-oriented development on this site remains steadfast. And I just wanted to speak to a couple of aspects of our development that were questioned at the council meeting, just to hopefully clear things up. First of all, the interlocal agreement that's before you says that 25% of the units on this site will be market rate, and that may be less than what you were expecting when we originally came in. We, it was closer to half of the units that were market rate and half that were affordable, and I just want to speak to that. Originally, we proposed with a partner, Spectrum Development, who was going to develop the market-rate housing, and we were primarily going to develop affordable housing. Because the partner that we were dealing with from Spectrum retired, the rest, and the rest of the partners were less committed to the idea of sticking this out longer, we lost that partner at the beginning of this year. We decided we were so far into the negotiations with all of the parties that it didn't make sense to try and find another partner who may add additional difficulties into the negotiation. So we have proceeded, King County Housing Authority, to acquire the site alone. We need to be prepared that we won't be able to find a replacement partner for Spectrum. The market right now is not very good for private development because of the still-high construction costs and the rising interest rates. But the site is bigger than what we need for affordable, our affordable housing development. And so what, what we're planning on doing is, if in the worst case we're unable to find a partner after we close, we will develop the other housing ourselves. We're required by state law that 50% of any housing that we develop is affordable at 80% of area median income. The rest can be market rate. So that's where the 25% comes from, half of 50%. However, we're also open, if we can, to the idea of finding a partner who may want to develop a lot more. We will, we will not have any units in that additional building, if we own it, that are targeted any lower than 80% of area median, and then we will have deeper income targeting in the, in the rest of the building that we're building. The other question that we had related to that is, why can't we just mix it all up together, especially if we're the owner? And the main issue that we have there is with our investors, specifically our low-income housing tax credit investors, who are not interested in taking on market rate risk. What they're investing in is the, the tax credits and the losses on the project, and when we add in a lot of market risk as well, there, we find fewer investors that are willing to participate in our deals. So that's the main reason. It's a, it's a model that we would love to be able to do if we could, and we're going to try and develop these as, so that one will not be able to tell one building from the other. So those are the comments that I have. I urge you to pass the two resolutions before you without change so that we can move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. City Clerk, who else has signed up to speak this evening?
Hi. All right. Our next speaker is David Nemira.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to speak with you. As my counterpart, Dan Landis, mentioned before, I'm here to speak on behalf of the interlocal agreement with KCHA and the lease to Tibbetts Valley Park. I'm the, currently the Director of Government Affairs for Lumen Technologies, where the owner of the, the site where the TOD project will reside. As Dan had mentioned, this has been a project that's been in the works for a number of years. We've been negotiating this. It's been a long, drawn-out, complicated project. But as Dan alluded to, we've finally gotten to the end of, I think, what is, or nearly to the end of what has been a long road, and I think we're, we're standing on the cusp of great community benefit. And from Lumen's perspective, we're appreciative of the city, the city's partnership, King County Housing Authority, and the opportunity to deliver a great project to the city, the residents of Issaquah. And just want to recognize real quickly Andrea Snyder and her leadership in this project, and really appreciate her efforts in helping to get this done. And, and so, you know, just with that, just really encourage you to, to support this project, support the ordinances as they lay before you, and look forward to getting this closed next week here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David. City Clerk?
Mark Clemmons.
My address is 1515 Hillside Drive Southeast, Issaquah. Dear, dear Madam Mayor and esteemed City Council and the city staff, I was going to write my year-end message as a poem, but nobody wants that, so I'll leave it to one of my volunteers. First off, I'd like to thank my engaged board and DEA volunteers. In 2022, DEA continues to shine as a beacon of downtown, as a nimble organization. We've added new volunteers, helped businesses, and other stakeholders finally put the pandemic behind them. In 2022, DEA had a banner year, positively impacting businesses through economic vitality and preservation, designed projects that beautified the district and a district-wide promotion. DEA continues to champion downtown businesses, providing support for recovery grants, as well as being nimble and communicating with local business needs. In March, DEA celebrated our 27th birthday by hosting a landmark building tour of Coote's Garage and the Hailstone Feed Store, both of which received preservation grants supported by DEA. In 2022, DEA added new programming and increased the scope, quality, and diversity of both visual arts and performing talent. We welcomed back vendors on Front Street and down Home 4th of July, as well as two wine and art works, and the historically hip artisan market was present at 23 events. We were sad to see 12 businesses leave, but we welcomed 11 new businesses in their place. Through Arts Commission grants, DEA strengthened partnerships that showcased the downtown core and art-imbued community and visitors to the Creative Arts District. While navigating COVID protocols, DEA, DEA's art programming provided much-needed foot traffic to local businesses and economic vitality to local art talent. DEA paid 100 music and performing groups with over 400 musicians and performers playing over 160 hours. Eighty-four local artists participated in programming. DEA worked with businesses in the district to hand out PPE, understand their needs, and communicate to simplify COVID updates on the latest mandates as well as recovery grant opportunities. The DEA design team spearheaded the Parklet Pilot Program that saw over 700 people enjoy outdoor dining along Front Street. The Flowers on Front program hung over 100 flower baskets. DEA's commitment to a clean city saw year-round and seasonal cleanups that combined over 1,000 volunteers log over 3,000 hours to help unify our downtown community. As DEA continues to promote the downtown, its businesses and the Creative Arts District through robust email, social, and advertising channels, it reached over 200,000 people year-to-date. Over 20,000 people have attended the DEA programming. This increase in downtown foot traffic despite pandemic, despite the pandemic during Q1, DEA directly supported other service organizations, including Issaquah Rotary's Grape Escape, Kiwanis Flag Program, the Turkey Trot, Parker Dilly, Satman on Sunset, and Welcoming Week. As we close out a banner 2022, I have three thoughts to share with the council. I am thankful to my board of directors and the volunteers. The board has been supportive and engaged, and I have seen a high growth in volunteer interest and participation in all facets of what we do. I have witnessed DEA stand out as a trusted partner to both the city and the community organizations, bring vibrance to downtown, and work with local businesses to secure pandemic grants, boost bottom-line sales, and help them navigate a challenging year. As I look to 2023, my hope is finally to put the pandemic behind us, partner more closely with the city, and strengthen those vital community bonds further. One of our partnerships was for Issaquah Rotary, and we made a 2023 Issaquah calendar. They're $20, and part of the proceeds goes towards youth programs. So if any of you guys want them, we've got a couple left. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark. City Clerk?
No one else has indicated a desire to speak.
You have a couple of ladies that I think would like to come up to the podium.
Hello. My name is Leilani Ash. I live at 200 New Partway Southwest here in Issaquah. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak with you here today. As I said, my name is Leilani Ash. I've been a resident in Issaquah only since August of this year. I'm a transplant from Bellevue. I lived there for 10 years, only a transplant from Northern California. Late August, I began volunteering for the Downtown Issaquah Association after attending the final Gas Station Blues. Then, after that, I've been volunteering ever since. Truthfully, I haven't stopped volunteering. Saturday, I was Mrs. Kringle. Sunday, I was helping put up the lights around the poles down Front Street. Through DEA and volunteering, I've had the honor to meet and become friends with many of the local shop owners and managers and employees of several of the businesses in I've been able to make new friends and fabulous friends. Many are also volunteers of Downtown Issaquah Association in the various activities that are sponsored by DEA. Through, through my personal volunteer duties, I have grown to see and explore and fall in love with even more this beautiful city of Issaquah. I don't know if any of you have seen the TV program Gilmore Girls, but through my stories to my children, they have helped me equate Issaquah to Stars Hollow that's shown on Gilmore Girls, and to the Shell Station as Luke's Diner, where everyone gathers and meets and swaps stories and has fun together during times like Gas Station Blues and Issaquah Goes Apples and the various other events throughout the year. Thank you for your support of the Downtown Issaquah Association, and thank you for helping me find my personal Stars Hollow in Issaquah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leilani, and welcome.
Thank you.
Next, if you just want to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, that would be great.
Hi, thank you. My name's Ms. Dina Anne, and I am a border participant. I live on the border of Sumamish and Issaquah, and I'm very excited at the opportunity to be here today. Mayor, councilmembers, and staff, I appreciate you taking the time to let us speak. And I just wanted to say, I'm the one who has come at you from Trash Equals Cash and been out there about, I love Issaquah so much, I can't stand to see an ounce of anything wrong with it, and anything I can do to participate in making Issaquah better and keep it as amazing as it is. I've been a resident of the Greater Puget Sound since 1981, and I remember my mom driving us out here when basically Gilman was two buildings over swamp land, and if you missed the exit, you were driving for an hour and a half almost to Eastern Washington or the Pass. So it was a very precarious efforts to try to get to one of the most quaint and amazing little areas, and then to see it grow robustly. My brothers lived here for 25 years, so we've had a chance to just watch it grow and grow, and I'm just a huge fan. And in my capacity for Trash Equals Cash, it's all about how can we help the homeless to have a better existence? How can we get trash off the streets? How can we marry the two and give somebody a leg up to have a better existence? And through that, I had seen some of the issues happening in different areas and went through some of the businesses off of Front Street and asked the owners, what have you been seeing? What has it been like? And everyone says, it's okay, we're doing really well, it's not been too bad, but have you talked to Christina? And I'm, I don't know Christina, so I'm going to say no. It's always a non-applicable if you don't know what they're saying, right? And so then the fifth business had said that to me, and she's at the Shell Station, she's at the Shell Station. And I had no idea that there was a DEA. I wasn't aware. I had seen a lot of the amazing things that go on in the city, but I didn't know who did what and how that balanced out. And when we got to talking, that was it. From that day, I actually started volunteering, and this was maybe only about three or four months ago. I have a severe injury, so I don't get to do much, and it's very, very difficult when I'm done, but the joy that I have doing it makes it worth it. And so I was out here with Santa and Mrs. Claus, and we were taking pictures for everybody. We were waving at everybody, and they were waving and honking back going up and down the street. My point being is that it is an amazing effort that DEA makes for all of these events that are happening in, on Front Street, and how much they help the businesses. We literally went by every business and got them together and filmed a Happy Holidays from 42, Happy Holidays from Jack's, Happy Holidays from, and so we get to put that up. My participation in donation of time is also going to be to create a podcast. So I'm very excited to get to go through to the businesses and give a little highlight to what do you do? What is it that is inspiring for your business, and how would you like to share that with the community? So I'm, I'm just delighted that DEA exists. I'm delighted that you guys are connected so well and participate together for the betterment of your city and for this amazing Front Street. I know Gilman sort of has its own feeling to it that's more obvious, so it doesn't need quite as much of a push and pull as it does with Front Street. But it's very exciting, the connection that you guys have. And I just have to say, being able to volunteer and participate and seeing, I'm an entrepreneur. I've started three different businesses, and I've had a chance to create them from concept to Salem to Fortune 500 companies, and it's been, you know, we need your passion to have a business like that. You need all the help you can get because you're specific to what you have started your business with and what you're able to do. So to have this support on the outside, and I will say one small added, I don't know how they keep straight everything that they do, because I'm trying to do it day-to-day, and I can't even get straight what's going on down there. There's so much. So the prolific effort that is made by the Downtown Issaquah Association, Mark and all the volunteers, and Christina, and everybody, it just blows my mind. And I know that if I come down any day at noon, I'm going to find her there, and she's going to be able to give me something to do, and there's going to be a business that'll benefit and the community as well. So again, this connection that you guys have and, and the city that you're putting, you know, that, the way that you have it evolve and the efforts that you make, I'm taking that to Sumamish for our city council. I'm taking what you guys are doing and taking it up there and saying, we're babies, these guys are grandparents, you know, with no offense to you, but, you know, the wisdom. And so we're, we're very excited at, I'm very excited at being able to take all your learned knowledge and efforts and, and just participate with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your volunteerism. That's very inspirational. Come on up and introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name's Paula Stringer, and I, I live at 14622 Southeast 276 Place in Kent. And I think that's probably the reason that I really wanted to speak today. I live in Kent, but Issaquah is my community. It has been for the last four years. When I did my first art walk here in 2017, and then I've been through every, every single year of all of the art stuff that you guys have done, I think, Mayor, I think I met you at Confluence. It has been my life to give back to this community, because I feel like I live here, even though I don't. And so two years ago, I was given the opportunity to take on the outreach committee as far as bringing new artists and local artists, local artists you've never even seen before to this community. And they're thriving. And some of the artists that we've been able to bring, one from Centralia, that brought their people here to shop locally. It was amazing. It's amazing, the fact that we can deal with our own internal artists, because a lot of them live here, but so many don't, and, and they bring their people here to shop locally. So I just, that's the only reason I came, is because I don't live here, but I wish I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much for traveling and being here tonight to talk to council. City Clerk, is there anyone else online? We do have a few members of the public online, but no one's indicating a desire to speak.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody who came in and spoke tonight. It's awesome, especially for council, to come in person and see your faces and hear your stories. We heard from two of our partners on the transportation-oriented development project, which council will have a couple of items on tonight's regular business. And we also heard from the Executive Director of DEA and several volunteers with testimonials about the great work and the wonderful events that are happening in Issaquah. So thank you very much. And as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to City Council at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And Council President Walsh, do you have any email comments to summarize on tonight's agenda topics?
Thank you. I have a few. On the consent agenda, the informational update on communications, a community member noted that the update mentions the public engagement toolkit getting an update, but does not mention public feedback on that update, other than the presentation to the Equity Board and City Council. So something to note. And then on our regular agenda, AB 8495, the Tibbetts Valley Park cell tower lease agreement, the community member mentioned that the creek buffer for Tibbetts Creek should be 150 feet, which they believe places the tower and building in the buffer. So something to consider for tonight's agenda item. And AB 8494, the interlocal agreement with King County Housing Authority, the community member asks for more public engagement on the details of the project and the public funds allocated. And that concludes the comments we've received.
Thank you very much, Council President. The next item on our agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and Councilmember Joe, who's attending virtually, you are up first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The December 13th Mobility and Infrastructure Meeting has been canceled. December 7th, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting at 11:00 a.m. at the Hilton. We'll be discussing Rules of Procedure, Open Meetings Act, and the Appearance of Fairness Doctrine, followed by a brief lunch for the committee members. The Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting has been canceled for December, as has the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I was recently appointed to the Association of Washington City's Federal Legislative Priorities Committee, and I attended my first meeting on November 29th. There were 42 attendees representing cities from across Washington State, and our only business for the meeting was reviewing, editing, and approving the AWC 2023 federal legislative priorities. The main topic of discussion was the urgent need for access to broadband in Washington's rural communities and how to shape advocacy in light of the bipartisan Build Back Better legislation. We also discussed advocacy responses to the statewide opioid crisis and affordable housing, which included a discussion, discussion regarding local control. The document, which was put together by all of the members and approved by all the members, has now been transmitted to the AWC Board of Directors for final approval. And it was a great meeting to participate in. On December 1st, I attended the Healthier Here Governor Board, which was my last meeting for that particular group, although I will continue as a member of the Connect to Community Information Exchange Advisory Group. Healthier Here continues its search for its new executive director, adopted its 2023 budget, and is preparing for federal hearings on its Medicaid transformation review. And then the final thing I would like to say, the Regional Transportation Committee was canceled this month. However, I did want to share with you that Metro Transit General Manager Terry White, who has served Metro for 35 years, is retiring. King County Executive Dow Constantine has nominated Michelle Allison as White's successor. Allison is the current Deputy Director of Metro Transit. I believe Terry White was the first African American to serve as Metro General Manager, and Michelle Allison will be the first woman to serve as Metro General Manager. And I would just say on a personal note that I'm going to miss Mr. White. He was a very gracious and gentle person to deal with, and he's going to be missed. So I just wanted to acknowledge his retirement and hope that he does well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one upcoming meeting. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will meet on December 6th, which is tomorrow, at 6:30, and we have one item on the agenda, which is ID 1273 Title 18 Land Use Code Consolidated Draft, which we have been working on for a long time on council. And to my fellow councilmembers, I wanted to And to my fellow councilmembers, I wanted to let you know that I will do a detailed report out after that meeting, but since this is not the first touch that council will have with the consolidated draft, if you do have questions about our conversation or about the materials discussed at the committee, at good of the order at our next meeting, so not this meeting since we haven't had that conversation yet, but at our next meeting, I am going to ask, at good of the order, if there are any things that you would like discussed more in depth or questions or anything like that so that we can make sure to have that known by staff so staff can answer those questions and have that material for us and so that we can keep this moving along and wrap up the Title 18 Land Use Code, which has been a long time coming. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on November 30. There were three items on the agenda, all of them were briefings. The first one was the 2023 GMPC Work Plan and Schedule, which will be focused on affordable housing and the Urban Growth Area Expansion Policy 4 for 1 program. The other two briefings, interestingly enough, one was on Affordable Housing Committee's status and where we're at with the allocation. The plan is that the Affordable Housing Committee will be making their recommendation to GMPC by the end of this year, and GMPC will pick that up in January. And the other briefing was on the Urban Growth Area Expansion Policies and the 4 for 1 Program, which will also be taken up by GMPC early next year. For upcoming meetings, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is meeting December 8, that's this coming Thursday, at 4:00 p.m. at headquarters. There are a number of special recognitions and retirements of people who have served our community for, in some cases, a long, long time. We are also going to receive a code of conduct presentation, an ethics, from Eric Quinn. There is our two-piece, oh, there will be an update from our Finance Administration Committee on the Fire Chief's Evaluation. There are two pieces of regular business. One of them will be the annual Agenda and Planning Calendar for EFER for the coming year, and then the other will be Legislative Agenda. And we have that, and we can share that with you if you are interested. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Mard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board is not meeting in December. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is meeting in December. On December 14, there will be a 7:00 p.m. virtual meeting, and the draft SCA Legislative Priorities that we discussed in good of the order last time will be discussed by PIC with an eye towards making a recommendation to the board. And then Council Services, Safety, and Parks Committee is canceled for December. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mard. Deputy Council President Hall?
No report.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Thank you. The King County Affordable Housing Committee met, the SCA Caucus had an extra meeting last week to discuss potential amendments to the King County, Countywide Planning Policies, or CPPs, which is what the GMPC, C, thank you, is going to review. We made some recommendations, working with some incredible staff members who just really worked together on some of those amendments. The amendments will come to a vote for the next Affordable Housing Committee meeting, which is this Friday, and then also to GMPC in the coming months. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. The next item on this evening's agenda is the Mayor's Report. There will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending potential litigation for RCW 42.30.110-N1-NI. This item is expected to take 45 minutes and no action is anticipated in open session. So in remembrance of Liz Brooks, we are deeply saddened to hear of the passing of a key member of the Isqua Parks and Community Services Team, Liz Brooks. Liz has been a part-time staff member at the front desk of the Isqua Community Center since 2019. Liz will be dearly missed by community members, customers, and colleagues, and we feel very fortunate to have worked with Liz and are very grateful for her years of service to the city of Isiqua. Liz's husband and daughter will keep us informed as to any remembrance or memorial plans, but our thoughts are with them during this challenging time. As you heard earlier, Transit Oriented Development Project, some items are on our agenda this evening. So the City Council will consider two agenda bills, AB 8494 and AB 8495. These are pivotal for advancing the development of more than 165 units of affordable housing. This will help address critical human services needs identified in the Housing Act Strategy and the Human Services Strategic Plan. Since 2016, and some would say even before then, the city administration and the city council have been working together on this project in response to the needs in our community. The Transit Oriented Development Project would be a major step toward facilitating redevelopment of an underused property, no offense, Lumen, near State Route 900. It sounded a little funny when I said it. I felt a little bad. The Transit Oriented, no, sorry, near State Route 900 and the Isqua Transit Center into much-needed housing, including affordable housing that would serve Isiqua families with the most limited incomes. The project would also help implement the Central Isqua Plan by delivering new housing and services adjacent to the Transit Center. Tonight marks an important milestone in this Transit Oriented Development, also called TOD, where the administration is asking council to approve relocating a cell tower onto city land, and without this relocation, the Transit Oriented Development Project will not be able to move forward. Administration is also asking council authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement with our partners, King County Housing Authority, the developer of this TOD project. The interlocal agreement guarantees the public benefits the project would bring, and I'm very proud of the work that council and staff have done to get us to this point tonight, and I'm looking very forward to the discussion. So we've had a few cold weather events, and the city has experienced its first snow of the winter. With more weather anticipated this season, be prepared for winter driving conditions. You can check our safety cameras for current road conditions via the Snow Route Status Map, and you can stay connected with the most up-to-date forecasts and check the city's social media for the latest updates. If you or someone you know needs shelter or support, there are resources available in our community. Visit isiquawawa.gov/shelters for more information on emergency shelters, meals and basic needs, and safe parking. I want to thank our city staff and our first responders who keep us safe and connected during these extreme weather events. And there are a few upcoming community events. The Christmas Bird Count. Join the Eastside Audubon Society for the longest-running community science survey in North America. Participants can join the survey to count birds at various locations on December 17. Go to the Eastside Audubon website to learn more and participate. King County's Historic Preservation Program Workshop. Join King County's and For Culture for a virtual review of the landmark designation process and a session on how to put a landmark nomination together. This workshop is online only on December 8 from 2:00 till 4:00 p.m. The virtual link is available through the city's website. And Santa Claus will be visiting various locations throughout Isiqua's holiday season. Visit the calendar page on the city's website for details. City Hall counters are opening late on December 8 at 10:00 a.m., and City Hall will be closed December 23 to 26 for the Christmas holiday. And that concludes the Mayor's Report. The next item of business this evening for council is the Consent Calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. And if it's authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? Yes. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Check out my online council number. Would somebody consider making a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as written.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, the motion before council is to approve the consent counter is presented. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I caught that, Councilmember Joe. Any opposed? So that passes 7-0. The next item of business is regular business. Our first item tonight is AB 8495, the Tibbetts Valley Park Cell Tower Lease Agreement. The ask before council this evening is to authorize this, and I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to present this item. Andrea?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me just pull up the presentation. Good evening, council. I'm Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator, and we have two items tonight for your consideration regarding the Transit Oriented Development Project and Opportunity Center. First is this Tibbetts Valley Park lease. This item, because it comes first, is going to have a little bit more background that pertains to both items. This happened to me last time, where I'm waiting for the ability to advance the slide. Let's see. There it is. Okay, the purpose of tonight is to update the city council on that Transit Oriented Development Project and Opportunity Center. You'll hear me refer to it as the TOD OC or the TOD Project. We also wish to seek council feedback and potential approval for a lease of Tibbetts Valley Park for a cell tower to be relocated from the future TOD OC site. The city in 2017 released a request for proposals looking for partners to develop a mixed-use, mixed-income project, that TOD OC, next to the Transit Center. The city selected King County Housing Authority and Spectrum Development Solutions. You've heard from King County Housing Authority, or KCHA, tonight. Spectrum is no longer a partner in this project. The property owner, Lumen, who you've also heard from tonight, of the future TOD OC site, requires a cell tower on the property to have their relocation site secured before they will transfer ownership to KCHA. Here is a quick project overview of the project as originally envisioned by the city and its partners. Originally, we had talked about two buildings with a total of 355 or more residential units adjacent to the Isqua Transit Center and Tibbetts Valley Park. You can see that project highlighted here, kind of drawn over the map. That project was to include originally 175 or more affordable units at 40% to 80% of area and median income, as well as 34,000 square feet of commercial space, including the 10,000-square-foot Opportunity Center. It also included a quarter-acre public plaza and the addition of a new city road. In 2017, the city council approved of a non-binding memorandum of understanding, that's MOU, outlining the roles, responsibility, and expectations of the project partners. And again, as I said, Spectrum's no longer a partner in this project. That MOU was to set the stage for a future development agreement between the city and the development partners. Since then, circumstances have changed with this project. It's evolved over the years, and development agreement is no longer required. The city also cannot compel KCHA to enter into a development agreement. And so instead, one of the things we're doing to replace that MOU is look at an interlocal agreement, which is also for your consideration tonight. But the first item is that we're considering this lease for Tibbetts Valley Park for that cell tower relocation. And the city considers the public benefits associated with the TOD OC as partial compensation for that city land lease. And those public benefits largely include the affordable housing that we've mentioned So here's a map of the TOD OC site that's highlighted in yellow, and you can see SR 900 that is running north and south on this map, highlighted in kind of that salmon color. And then Tibbetts Valley Park is immediately south of the future TOD OC site. On Tibbetts Valley Park, you'll see a red X that's south of the western parking lot, and that red X is the approximate location of the proposed cell tower. That's for your consideration this evening. The city has, and its partners, and the telecommunications company have done a pretty exhaustive search of potential sites outside of the park. The park was certainly not our first choice. And here is a list of the park, of the potential cell tower locations that we have examined. You'll see some of the criteria at the top of this chart. Criteria for locating the site include coverage requirements for the cell tower providers and the antenna, those operating the cell antenna. Also, we were looking at making sure that the antenna were not very close to residential units. We wanted, we didn't necessarily want them visible from residential units, and there's FCC guidelines about how close antenna can be to residential units. To maintain this equipment, there also needed to be access to maintain it. We wanted to ensure that on a 24/7 basis, as well as we wanted to make sure, of course, that the cell tower location would be in alignment with the Isiqua Municipal Code. So those were some of the criteria that we were looking into in order to find a cell tower relocation site. And we examined, as I said, a number of locations before we looked at Tibbetts Valley Park. That included on top of the future TOD building, included another location on the property but adjacent to the building, so not on the roof, but maybe next to the building. We looked at the Isqua Transit Center and putting that on the roof of that building or attached to some of the walls of the Isqua Transit Center. We looked at private properties to the northeast and west. Also, we looked at the possibility of attaching antennae to city streetlights on Newport Way, nearby reservoirs and water towers on Squawk and Talis, where there's already cell tower equipment. We looked also at, there's a city-owned parcel on Newport Way that's basically just to the west and a little bit north of the Transit Center. And we also looked at Fire Station 72, which is approximate to the current site as well. And none of those sites really met all of the criteria, especially concerning the municipal code and some of the coverage requirements that the cell tower and telecommunications companies had. I'm not going to go over this chart in detail, but that's a summary of how we have evaluated all of the sites. So the proposal for your consideration tonight is a lease for a portion of Tibbetts Valley Park as the relocation site for that cell tower and its supporting equipment. You'll see in this picture an approximation of what that cell tower and associated structure would look like at the Tibbetts Valley Park site. There's still finalizing design work that needs to be done. As the landlord, the city would be able to approve of design even before permits are The proposal includes rent, that would be 20% revenue share. We anticipate this to be approximately 1,800 a month. And additional compensation, as I stated before, would occur through some of the public benefits from the TOD OC project, that affordable housing. And that's because if not for the TOD OC project, we really wouldn't be considering a cell tower at Tibbetts Valley Park. The length of the term is 30 years. When we last went before the Safety Services and Parks Committee, we were looking at 25 years, and Vertical Bridge had asked for 30, and so we have consented to 30 years. So that's a change from what the committee saw last time. The tower would be 85 feet tall per code, and that 85 feet also is about the average height of the field lighting that we have currently at the park. And as I said before, the administration would be able to approve the final design before the permit applications are submitted. So we have a little bit greater control over the visual impacts of this structure and what it would look like than even what our design standards and code would suggest. Updates from the committee meeting that we had last time, there were a couple of things that we were still under negotiation and considering. One is this idea of a tournament, and that's the ability, Vertical Bridge had asked for the city to assume their subleases with telecommunications like Verizon, T-Mobile, et cetera, and operate the tower in the case that Vertical Bridge dissolves and is unable to sell the city lease to another provider. So essentially, they wanted the city to take over and operate the tower as they would. This is something we were reluctant to do because the city is not a telecommunications provider, we're not in that type of business. And so we negotiated with this, negotiated with them on this, and you will notice that provision is not in the lease. So the city would not be assuming the operations of the tower in the case that Vertical Bridge dissolved. The other, the other provision, that's an update from the last time we were before the council committee, the Vertical Bridge had wanted the city to renegotiate a new lease with the lender to Vertical Bridge and provide the exact same lease terms to the lender, should the lender take over the lease. We said no, we were uncomfortable doing that because that might really... We said no, we were uncomfortable doing that because that might really extend the length of the lease. And what we wanted to do was preserve future council's ability to renegotiate. And so what would happen if the lender assumed the lease in the current draft lease that's before your consideration tonight? What would happen is that the lender would just simply take over the lease under the same terms and finish out that term of the lease, so not necessarily extending it beyond what's already provided for in the lease. So those provisions, like I said, have changed since the committee saw it last time. Other updates that I wanted to follow up from the council committee's questions. One of the questions we received was, how does the revenue that's anticipated in this lease agreement compare to the typical lease agreements for a telecommunications tower? And so we've, we've tried to run the numbers and compare apples and oranges a little bit here. There are different types of, of rent and compensation that the city would receive. But from our best estimates, it looks as though if we were to apply the city's most recent lease rent structure, that same type of template, then the city would receive $5 million, $5.6 million over the lifetime of the lease. But what's proposed in the Vertical Bridge lease is $1 million, a little over $1 million in the lease that we would receive for the lifetime of the lease. So you can see that there's, there is a discrepancy there between what we would be getting from the Vertical Bridge lease versus applying the same type of lease structure to our most current cell tower lease. And that's largely because Vertical Bridge doesn't really want to move. They're in a very strong negotiation position from their current location, and they wanted the exact terms that they have currently to be applied to the city lease. And so they have a very favorable lease right now with Lumen, according to the city, who has, who holds other lease agreements. We believe their agreement's fairly favorable. Their agreement also occurred with a large upfront lump sum payment that's already been paid. And so they don't want to pay that to the city since they've already paid that to Lumen. And again, they're in a very strong position and don't want to leave their current location. And so applying the rest of the city, and applying the rest of their lease terms to the city lease, that equals a lifetime revenue of about $1 million. There's a lot of assumptions in your packet tonight. I list some of those assumptions, but that's, that's our best estimate today. So as I stated before, we believe that the public benefits that come with this TOD project also are partial compensation for the city land lease. That affordable housing has been valued at $41 million over the lifetime of that housing. And so that is, that it's also a substantial compensation and benefit the city would, would be receiving in exchange for this land. Another question that we received from the committee is, how does the sighting of the cell tower at Tibbetts Valley Park follow other precedents for public engagement? And there were questions about how does it relate to public engagement regarding amenities at parks? And we say the administrative, the telecommunication facility differs from a dog park or other recreational amenity. So it's not like we're proposing a new skate park or something else at Tibbetts Valley Park. It doesn't change the recreational programming or interfere with the recreational programming at the park. And the city has not typically in the past provided public outreach outside of council, council meetings when negotiating telecommunication leases on public property. Speaking of public notification, I wanted to make sure the council understood what the next steps would be according to our permitting process. Should council approve the lease agreement tonight, then the permit process provides for the following: written notification of a proposed above-ground installation to all owners of property within 300 feet of the proposed location as part of the permit submitted, and also this project requires a SEPA and NEPA process that includes public comment periods. So options for your consideration tonight. First option is to authorize the administration to enter into the lease with Vertical Bridge for a portion of Tibbetts Valley Park. Second option would be to direct the administration to continue to negotiate with Vertical Bridge on terms of council's choosing, to return to council with revised lease terms. Some of the impacts of that is that we are in a time crunch. Lumen would like to sell the property by the end of the year, and this is council's last regularly scheduled meeting of the year. And so Lumen has made it very clear to the city and our partners that if they're unable to sell the property to King County Housing Authority by the end of the year, then they would consider other offers they have received that don't include relocating the cell tower and are for actually more money. The third option is that we simply do not move forward with the lease negotiations at Tibbetts Valley Park. Of course, that would mean that the TODOC project, as council has envisioned it, would likely not move forward. So our recommendation tonight is to authorize the administration to enter into the lease with Vertical Bridge for a portion of Tibbetts Valley Park. And as stated before, this is really the best option to support the TODOC project. Timing and next steps. So pending council authorization of the lease, Lumen and KCHA will finalize the sale of the future TODOC site. We're talking as soon as next week, as I think Dave Nomura said in his comments. And Vertical Bridge would then move forward to finalize their design of the tower and apply for permits. We would expect construction to begin in 2022. And after the tower relocates, then construction on the TODOC site could begin. And so then KCHA would begin that design process for the TODOC project. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Before we go to questions, is it okay if I ask the committee chair if he would like to give an update as well? Chair Marts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I mentioned in the last committee report that I gave at the last council meeting, we did support this decision three to oh to go forward. There was public input on this process. I would say there were, there were questions about future changes in code. You know, there's potential changes in code that could happen. This is not that far from a Salmonic bearing stream, so there was somebody in the, a member of the public that brought that up. You know, there were folks that would love to have more public engagement. This has had much public engagement over the last five years, and, and the public certainly knows that, that we've been having this conversation. It's been a, a little bit of a weird process because by the nature of the process, the city would go away and have conversations with folks and then come back. So somebody newly moved to the community might feel like it hadn't, they hadn't heard about it before, but it's, it's had, you know, what, a dozen updates with the city. So, but that, that was some of the feedback that we received. But in the end, we did move forward with this, as well as the second, the second part of the evening's conversations in regard to a TODOC, which we'll talk about in a bit, perhaps.
Thank you, Chair Marts. So now let's open it up for questions of council. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So you provided the list of the other sites and why they were ruled out with the number of criteria, coverage requirements of providers, lack of proximity of antenna to residential units, maintenance, access, and municipal code. And just to confirm, the site that is recommended is, it meets all of those criteria because it wasn't on that list.
That's correct. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? And Councilmember Joe, make sure you raise your hand if you'd like to. Council President.
Yes, thank you. Could you talk over what the process would be? At this point, I think we don't necessarily have clarity about whether this is within a certain buffer range of a stream because there isn't a specific site located for the project. So can you talk about what the process would be as a specific plan is pulled together for reviewing that and understanding what the environmental concerns might be?
Sure. And part of that answer includes the process for Title 18 and its updates. And so, so what we have now is, we know that in the draft code, the city is required by Washington state law to use the best available science. And what we have determined through our studies is that 150-feet buffer in this, in this case, we're proposing is the best available science. But that still has to go through a process. And that process includes publishing the code, having a number of public hearings, having a number of city council committee hearings, PPC hearings, and then before it comes before council's consideration. And so what we still have is the draft code. Until council adopts and updates that draft code, it is the draft code, and we have to go by the codes that we have currently in place. And so the codes that we have currently in place, I believe, suggest 100-foot buffer. And while the site that we're looking at putting this cell tower and structure on are 125 or 135 feet outside of that buffer, so it is compliant with current municipal code. And what that means is, should Vertical Bridge get their permits, their building permit in, on time, as in, in, under the current code, should they get their building permits submitted under the current code, then we would move forward as we're obligated to do as the city. Should Vertical Bridge get complete building permits in, permit applications in after the city council adopts a new code, then we would have to locate another, we would have to find another location within the park that, of course, is compliant with municipal code and would be outside of whatever buffer council adopts if it's that 150-foot buffer.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I'm trying to figure out how to formulate this one. The, so entering this agreement with Vertical Bridge, in the event that King County Housing and Lumen don't reach an agreement, what, where, where does that leave us? I mean, are we committed to doing this? Where does that leave us?
So if King County Housing of KCHA and Lumen do not reach an agreement, then that means that the cell tower would stay on its current location. And so what we have in this lease is a two-year option before the lease kicks in necessarily. And so they have two years to explore whether or not they need to relocate and whether, and for them to exercise this lease option. So KCHA, as per their current agreements with Lumen and with Vertical Bridge, KCHA is actually paying for the cell tower relocation, up to a certain amount. And so if KCHA does not gain ownership of this property, then they are not going to pay for the relocation of Vertical Bridge. And then Vertical Bridge will not relocate. Vertical Bridge, as I said before, doesn't want to relocate. They would rather stay on the property. So if Lumen retains ownership, then they would not be moving to the city property, and the lease would basically be null and void since they would choose not to exercise their option.
Great. You actually kind of teed up my second question, which was, so it's King County Housing Authority is responsible for building the new tower and building the outbuilding? Is that, who would be responsible or some, not the city?
Not, not the city, no. We are not in that business. King County Housing Authority has agreed to pay for relocation costs, but they're not, they're also not the applicant. They're not building it. Vertical Bridge is the subject matter expert here. So they, they build cell towers all across the United States. They would be the applicant. They would be the responsible party for construction, and our partners, King County Housing Authority, are helping to pay for that process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? And Councilmember Joe, not seeing a hand, so I'm assuming you're fine. Okay. Chair, would you like to make a motion?
I would, thank you. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a cell tower lease with Vertical Bridge Towers IV LLC for a portion of Tibbetts Valley Park in support of the TODOC project in substantive form, and authorize the city attorney to make subsequent non-substantive technical and legal edits.
Is there a second? Second, Council President? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as, as discussed, this is something that has been on our plate in one form or another for five years. Very exciting to think that it could be resolved this evening and could move forward. The Herculean efforts by Andrea Snyder can't be overstated, so I'm very excited this evening. This is something that has just, you know, we've seen so much in the community, how important this would be. You know, when I first ran for city council in 2009, we were talking in the community about the $1 million that we had left over from Talis and how we wanted to put it towards, you know, a good project and the opportunity center side of this. We looked for years and years, for those of you who weren't part of that process, Barb knows it well, years and years and years. So the combination of, you know, workforce housing and the possibility of, of having some human services located, also transit-adjacent to cover this area that, that doesn't exist currently, where folks have to go into Bellevue or they have to go up to Redmond, is just such a strong win for the community. So I'm really excited this evening, and, and I just, I want to thank Lumen so much for continuing with us and working with us and being patient while the other parties had to get brought to the table, recognizing our enthusiasm, our continued enthusiasm for this. So I will be voting an ecstatic yes this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Additional discussion? Councilmember Ray, Council President. Council President, Councilmember Ray.
I was just going to add my enthusiastic support as well, and really appreciate having the partners at the table tonight in case there are any last-minute questions, but also acknowledging the support of this long project and hopefully seeing the wheels continue to turn. And again, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Andrea, for all of the hard work on this project.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Ray.
Well, I am super excited about half of this discussion. I think there are two issues here, and I think we're, we are mushing them together, and I'm not sure that that's the right thing to do. I have been since we first started talking about this. I think the TOD is a great project, and I understand the implications of not doing this cell tower move on the TOD, and that's where my, my angst is coming from. An 80-foot-tall cell tower in a public park is not a non-issue to the public. A 400-square-foot, 500-square-foot building in a public park that's not a city building is not a non-issue to the public. And, and we really, with the exception of two or three people we heard from at a Services and Safety Committee, have gotten no feedback from the public on this. So my, my angst is, quite frankly, I want to do the TOD. I think we have to do it. We've come this far. It would be silly to, to back away. I hate that we are jammed up into not having to go, having the ability to go through a public process and at least let the public know that this is something that we are going to do to their park. It's not our park. It's their park, and we're putting, you know, we're putting buildings, we're putting towers that don't necessarily, you know, I'm, I'm sure we will do a great job of making that cell tower look like a tree, but it's not a tree. And so I ultimately will support this. I just wanted to get out that this has put us in, I think, an unfavorable position, and I think when this gets built, there will be a certain level of outrage, and we just need to be prepared for that, and because it's legitimate.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Any other comments, discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I have, I have similar comments to Councilmember Marts. I also spoke about this project, the TODOC project, when I was first running for council five years ago with enthusiasm, and I continue to support the project, and we do have to take this step to continue moving the process forward. I think it's a huge community benefit, and we are also stewards of the, the funds here, and we have a $41 million community benefit for the value that we're getting for this leased tower. And so I think there's a compelling argument there, as well as the compelling argument that we simply have to move this forward for the community benefits that we'll get for the affordable housing and the TODOC. And affordable housing is something that I think we all agree we are in dire need of and will be a huge community benefit, and I am in strong support for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Any other comments? Councilmember DeMichele?
Well, I felt compelled to join my fellow council members in saying how enthused I am tonight to be able to vote yes on this. And thanks again to Andrea for amazing negotiations. It was wonderful to see the additional things that you were able to negotiate just this past week. Thanks so much to Lumen and Mr. Nomura for being here. And Mr. Landis, I wanted to call out as well because I praised him at the And Mr. Landis, I wanted to call out as well because I praised him at the SFP meeting for his wonderful letter, which really outlined all of the, all of the many, many permutations that we have gone through over the last five to seven years. And thank you as well, King County Housing Authority, for your steadfast support and interest in this project. So we have many people to thank and it will be a great joy to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Any additional discussion? Okay. If there's no discussion, the motion before council is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute a cell tower lease with Vertical Bridge Towers IV LLC for a portion of Tibbetts Valley Park in support of the TODOC project in substantive form and authorize the city attorney to make subsequent non-substantive technical and legal edits. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. So thank you very much, Andrea. The next item of business, I believe, is also yours. It is AB 8494, Interlocal Agreement with King County Housing Authority for the Transit-Oriented Development and Opportunity Center project. So if you'd like to start your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it's me again. Related item, so King County Housing Authority, interlocal agreement, as I've already referred to them a couple of times, KCHA. Few more acronyms, I'm afraid, involved in this, in this presentation. We're, the direction we're looking for tonight from council is, does council have any changes for the draft interlocal agreement? That's the ILA. And we seek authorization to enter into such an agreement with KCHA tonight. So as I said, some of the background was provided in the previous presentation and just for the sake of time and streamlining, we'll go right to the proposal. So in the interlocal agreement, we has proposed at least 155 units of affordable housing for those earning 40% to 60% of area median income. It includes a 10,000-square-foot opportunity center with a city contribution of up to 5.05 million. So this was in addition, thanks to comments received in the last council committee that council wanted a, a cap on what that, what that number would be. And so that cap is, the concern was the city might be writing a blank check with this ILA. So let's provide a cap and if, to go beyond that point, we'll need to have a stop and a check with city council and say, okay, you know, should construction estimates be more than 5.05 million, we'll need to come back to council and have that conversation. We still would need to have a conversation to appropriate such money anyway, but that's the cap that's been a change from last time that the council committee has seen this item. In addition, in the ILA, it's proposed to have five units reserved for life enrichment options, that's Leo House, to house people with developmental disabilities. Also, a mix of market rate units with the affordable housing. And again, a change from last time, thanks to the feedback from the committee, is to have a percentage of no, less than 25% of all units would be market rate. And so I think that Mr. Dan Landis addressed this in some of his comment for this evening, but that's again, just to put a number on so that council can be assured that there will be market rate development with this project, no less than 25% of the units would be market rate. That still needs to be determined, but at least it would be no fewer than that. And finally, also a provision within the ILA is that the city would agree to the land lease for the cell tower that you all just approved tonight.
Deputy City Administrator, before we move off the slide, if we, Councilmember Marts has a question?
Yes, could you, for those councilmembers who haven't followed this from the beginning, can you explain the projected sources of that 5.05 million dollars? Thank you.
Yes, I can. So we have from the state, a grant for $3 million. That's for medical and behavioral health services for low-income populations. We have just shy of a million dollars in mitigation funds reserved and we've been setting aside for this project. And so that equals 4 million. And you know what, I'm forgetting where the last million comes from, but I will accept help from council, otherwise I can call upon Jean Paul, our management analyst. So, so sorry, I forgot that detail tonight. But I know Jean Paul, who's on the line, has, is prepared with the answer to this question as well.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Jean Paul, management analyst from the executive office. From the slide, from January 2020, Andrea already mentioned the 3 million from the state, roughly 1 million in city mitigation funding, the other million is from bond and debt issuance repaid from lease payments.
Thank you, Jean. In addition to that, while this construction estimate is rather old, that 5.05 million that we've discussed before with the city council, the city also has other new revenues that are set aside for affordable housing and behavioral health that we've been accumulating and have not spent. So I believe it's in your council materials tonight that should the, the construction estimate be over that, we have other funds to turn to that could help pay for this that would not impact the general fund and that those revenues are specifically set aside for projects like this, according to state and county law. Any other questions at this point of what is in the ILA?
Okay. Seeing any. Great.
Okay, so in general, as we take a step back, the other things that the ILA provides, it formalizes the obligations with KCHA. You may recall in the background section of the last item for your consideration, said there was a non-binding MOU that council agreed to in 2017. So this really formalizes those obligations. And without this ILA, KCHA could turn around and flip the property and they could buy it for what they're buying it for, and then they could turn around and sell it without developing anything on it. That's a possibility. So this ILA really formalizes those obligations of what would be built and what levels of affordability would be involved in this project. The ILA also helps to formalize the public benefits that the city will receive that are considered additional compensation for the city land lease. And that's important just to provide that paper trail and that official link between the city lease and the benefits that we anticipate receiving. And then the other thing that's important to know is the ILA doesn't consider any other new city obligations we haven't already discussed at this point. So there's, there's nothing new that you haven't considered before in the ILA. Okay, options for your consideration tonight. First option would be to authorize the administration to enter into the ILA. A second option would be to keep negotiating and return to council with specific points that you may provide us this evening. And third option would be to not move forward with the ILA. Of course, the impacts of two and three would be that it could, again, affect the project. We are in a tight timeline and we are trying to seek your approval for both of these items tonight, the lease that you just approved and the ILA, because we do see them as linked and related to one another. So of course, the administration's recommendation is for city council to authorize the administration to enter into the ILA with King County Housing Authority in its substantive form. Timing and next steps. Pending approval, Lumen and KCHA will execute their purchase and sale agreement for the future TODOC site, transferring ownership and control of the site to KCHA. And KCHA will then complete the design for this project. A KCHA would then update the construction cost estimates for that opportunity center and the administration would return to city council with that new estimate and seek direction on authorizing funds. I also wanted to highlight in next steps, some of the future public notification and comment opportunities related directly with the TODOC project. So according to the draft code, which is what we would anticipate at this point that the project be subject to, the draft code would require as part of the permitting process that the development commission would approve the site development permit. Also, in the draft code, a community meeting would be required. And that noticing that would be required associated with the community meeting would be for owners and residents within 500 feet of the project and, as well as parties of record and a few other stakeholders. Also, within the draft code provisions for public notification, there would be a pre-decision hearing, public hearing required, and again, noticing within 500 feet. The project also would be subject to SEPA, which includes a 15-day comment period. So again, direction needed for tonight is, does council have any changes for the draft ILA? And also, we're seeking authorization to enter into the agreement with KCHA. Any questions?
I think I'll go to the committee chair again, Andrea, and let Chair Marts share some comments and then we'll go to questions. Chair Marts?
So, so we really, I mean, essentially, looked at these issues, essentially they were combined. And so, you know, the public comment has been around the whole, the whole thing. So this was, if you're, you know, in for the first part, you're in for the second part, really. There wasn't a substantive difference in the, in the conversation for the second part. So that's, it was also a 3-0.
Thank you very much. Council questions of deputy, for deputy city administrator's presentation? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So in our packet, it talks about the differences between the MOU versus the ILA. And one of the differences, one of the biggest differences is probably that it's binding. The ILA is binding, whereas the MOU is, is memorandum of understanding. But then it also talks about other differences. So it says there's no mention of the public plaza or other local transportation improvements that may be required during the permitting process. So I wondered if you could speak to the public plaza and whether that's part of the continued vision and if so, why it's not in, in there.
Yes, thank you. So yes, public plaza, as well as there's a city street that we're looking to construct with for this project. Neither of those were mentioned in the project. Public plaza specifically because as KCHA said in the beginning of this meeting, they lost their development partner, Spectrum Solutions. And so in order to develop that second building that more, that would have more of the market rate, they need, they're looking at what their options are within that property. So the design, I think, is probably going to change a little bit from what we saw originally. The other thing for consideration is that under the new Title 18 codes, there might be some more limitations on how they can use their property, different buffers, for example, for their consideration or setbacks. And so at this point, they, in the ILA, given those unknowns, they were, they were unwilling and uncertain to provide guarantees about that public plaza. And they wanted to focus on the affordable housing component as, as really the focus of the project. So I think there's still a lot that needs to be fleshed out in design and I, I welcome Dan Landis, if you would like to come up to the microphone and speak a little bit more from KCHA's perspective about why it's not in the interlocal agreement.
Thank you, Andrea. I think you did a great job of explaining it. We just have a lot of unknowns, we have a lot of costs, the acquisition cost is a lot higher than what was in our original budgets. Construction costs are much higher and we need to see what's feasible, given the, the new layout of the site, which is essentially 30 feet to the west, so incorporates more of the wetland and then with the potential for wetland buffers increasing. We just, there's only so much that we'll be able to put, fit on the site and until we actually delve into that, we don't know. We've been reluctant to spend more money on the, the development until we actually had site control, which we haven't had yet, so.
Additional questions? Councilmember Ray?
Thanks. Kind of a follow-up and building on that. The 34,000 square feet of commercial, which included the 10,000 opportunity center, so now is, is all we're going to expect and kind of in that is the opportunity center, not the other 24,000 of commercial, or is that still in the plan?
So the 34,000 square feet of commercial is not in the ILA, so there's no binding agreement there. What is a binding agreement is the 10,000-square-foot opportunity center. That said, this project also would be subject, the city has a provision for redevelopment in the central Issaquah area that's concerned about jobs. And so the provision is aimed at making sure that a lot of commercial property is not just redeveloped into residential property, that we retain some of that commercial mix in order to retain some of those jobs. So the future development would have to be compliant with that provision, which means that we would need a certain amount of commercial space, that's to be determined, but in order to, to demonstrate that they would be able to retain or improve upon the number of jobs that are currently located at that site. So it's not in the MOU for that 34,000 square feet, but we do anticipate this project to be a mixed-use project.
Thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Would someone care to make a motion? Chair Marts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with King County Housing Authority, KCHA, for the Transit-Oriented Development and Opportunity Center project in substantive form and authorize the city attorney to make subsequent non-substantive technical and legal edits.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion? There's a little bit of a rush there. Let's go with the motion maker.
Let me address a couple of specific points that we discussed, or around some of the questions that have been had earlier. While it certainly would have been nice to have a commitment on a, on a small public plaza, I would refer my fellow councilmembers to the public plaza in front of Regal Issaquah or the public plaza that's at the bottom of the Safeway Fuel Station, neither of which, when I've been there, I've not seen people running and frolicking and enjoying themselves. But those are, you know, they are small public spaces, but I think in general, that, you know, the public plaza, the benefit around a public plaza, I think there's some question on existing public plazas. So that hasn't, for me, that did not change the, the dynamics of it. I'll mention, I think the 24K in retail wasn't retail, it was originally planned as daycare, right?
Commercial, yeah, daycare.
I remember daycare.
Yes, it was just labeled as commercial, not necessarily retail. So it could be daycare, also there was a kidney center that was considered at one point.
There was, I remember that. But it wasn't, it wasn't what we think of as generally mixed use necessarily, right? There had been an idea that had been, it wasn't, you know, general retail.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Marts. When I say mixed use, I mean mixed use between residential and some commercial component, which could be retail, could be office, could be medical.
Right, okay. And then I'll just make a comment and it somewhat circles back to the first point. This whole question around where the buffer will be on creeks and whatnot, you know, there was, when we went to 100-foot buffer, there were so many exemptions that we had to make in the city. It's going to be a very convoluted process if we choose to move forward with 150-foot buffer. I just want people to understand that, that will have many, 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 I mean, hundreds of commercial and residential properties will be impacted by that. So it's a, it's a big step that would impact a lot of people and affect a lot of decisions. We made, we had to grandfather in so much stuff when we went to the 100-foot and it would just be so much worse than 150. So anyhow, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray, did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. I was going to defer to Councilmember DeMichele, but...
Oh, Councilmember... Okay, well, you as the secondor?
I know, but it's because I jumped her on the second.
Have the option to defer to Councilmember DeMichele.
I think this is an absolutely essential thing to do. A non-binding MOU puts the city at risk. The original plan, where we were a party to this development, we had leverage and we could, the MOU provided a framework for having those discussions when everything kind of evolved and Spectrum dropped out and we didn't provide land, we became not a party to this. And so the ILA is absolutely essential, in my opinion, document to make sure that we get what we, we think we're going to get and is also a document that protects all of the partners, including Lumen and, and King County Housing Authority and going forward. So, and I appreciate the, the cap on the opportunity center costs and I wasn't really concerned what that cap was, I just wanted a cap. So thank you for putting that in there and I suspect it'll come back and we'll have some, some further negotiations on that. But this sets us up for success very well, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele, followed by Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. So if I have one takeaway from both this project and also being involved with the Together Center project up in Redmond, is that you set a vision... Center project up in Redmond, is that you set a vision, you have this big vision, and then you hang on to that vision through many, many, many changes. These are really complicated projects. You're not only dealing with the public realm, but the private realm, and the private realm needs to make sure that it pencils out and is, that investors get their investment back. You're dealing with the federal government in terms of low-income housing tax credits. You're dealing with the ups and downs of the economy and all of those things, because no matter how smoothly a project goes, it's going to take years before you actually see it developed. So, so we have in front of us interlocal agreement tonight, and it may not be exactly what we dreamed of seven years ago or six years ago, but this project, the vision that we've had, is going to get done. And to me, I'm so excited, and it's going to be great, and it may not be exactly what we envisioned, but it's going to be a wonderful project. So of course, I am supporting this. I just think that, I just want to commend my fellow council members and the administration for hanging on to that original vision and seeing it through. This is just an amazing evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I would just like to echo and support Council De Michele's comments. I believe that a vision is important for this project, and part of that, I think, is, that I think was mentioned by Mr. Landis, was that there are going to be two buildings, and one may be predominantly market rate, and one may be predominantly, you know, affordable housing and other people that are somewhat subsidized and through our, through our programs. I would just want to spell out that I hope that both those buildings look alike. I hope that both those buildings are such that no one could tell the difference between the affordable housing and the regular housing, you know, the market rate housing, so that people just see it as a development. I think that it's so important, and Mr. Landis mentioned that it was going to be something that they would focus on, I just hope that that vision would be seen through. Again, thank you to the administration, and particularly to Andrew Snyder for making this happen. When I was on council, we first got the $1 million from the Highlands, and one of the things we were looking at was buying a building that was, the old medical, it's a medical building now, just north of the post office along that passageway. And at that time, it was an old rundown building, and is nothing like and doesn't equate at all to the vision that's here and the opportunity that's here for affordable housing, for opportunities for employment, and opportunities to make a project with transit-oriented development so people can get out of their cars. So I really commend the administration for the work done here and fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will be supporting this. I wanted to remark on my earlier comments or question about the public plaza. So really, the reason why I was asking about that is it was a change from the original vision, which is to be expected with a project that is this complicated and has gone through so many iterations and changes and necessary, necessary changes. The reason I think it would be still important to have is really the same reason that the market rate housing is so important. That was also part of the original vision of the project, having the market rate and having it be similar to, identical, hopefully, in appearance to the affordable housing, so that we aren't isolating one community or singling out one community in the affordable housing. So I think that's really important. I think the public plaza, if done well, could be a place for the community to gather and would further, would further include the community within the greater Issaquah community, the community that would be living in the affordable units in this project. So I would like to encourage that. I hope that it continues to be a part of the vision. I do think the market rate housing that is in the ILA is very important, and I was very glad to see that the Services, Safety and Parks Committee clarified that. I think the edits that came out of that conversation are really important, including that edit. So I will be supporting this, and wanted to make those comments, and also just wanted to confirm that I believe Mr. Landis did say the buildings will look similar to, as much as they possibly can, and Mr. Landis is nodding. So with that, I will just confirm my support for this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Martz, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just one quick follow-on. You know, in mentioning Deputy City Administrator Snyder and all of her hard work, and Lumen and King County Housing Authority, I want to mention one more thank you, which was at an early point in this conversation, earlier on. There's a lot more question about the impact on ending fund balance, and we didn't at the time have a, you know, there was a real question on what it would, what it would mean to our finances, and State Senator Mullet came and talked to us and said, hey, I'll go get you $3 million for the Opportunity Center, and he did. So I just want to say that's another, you know, so many facets that, so many people's goodwill got us where we are tonight, and Senator Mullet was part of that as well. Thank you.
Yes, he was. Thank you. Any other comments before we move to the vote? Okay. If there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the interlocal agreement with King County Housing Authority, KCHA, for the transit-oriented development and Opportunity Center project in substantive form, and authorize the city attorney to make subsequent non-substantive technical and legal edits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed? That thankfully passes seven and now. I really, really, if the council will indulge me, I would love to share also a few words of gratitude with you for sticking with this project. This is a really great exercise for anybody to observe about how difficult it is to get a good project done, even when you have willing partners. We've had great partners throughout this process, and it has still been unbelievably complicated. So these are stories that we can share with other cities. I wanted to thank King County for the $10 million grant that is coming through for this project. That was an amazing opportunity that we received years ago, and then being patient with us as we walked through this incredible journey that we took together. But this is hard, and this is very exciting for the scale of this project for Issaquah. I'm really excited. For me personally, I started to hear about this when I was on council. I've now been in the mayor's chair for five years. I have worked with three different city administrators and an interim city administrator on this project, and Andrea has sat in a couple of those chairs, and it's just been a really great effort by the staff team as well to make sure that there are many, many, many times where it looked like we would not get this over the end line. So thank you so much for your vote tonight and support for this project. I think this is super exciting for our city. So thank you very much. And thank you too, as well. Lumen and King County Housing have been fabulous partners. So the next item of business this evening is AB 8486. It's the 2023 City Council Calendar, and I'd like to invite our city clerk, Tisha Geezer, to present this item. Tisha?
Hello, council. I'm Tisha Geezer, city clerk. I don't have a visual presentation for you tonight, but I would like to talk you through this new plan. Say goodbye to our guests. So each year, at this time of year, the clerk's office starts planning for the year ahead. We look at your regular meeting schedules based on the municipal code and the council rules, and we make adjustments for city hall closures and legal holidays. But in September of this year, the council passed a resolution recognizing some cultural and religious holidays and committing to not schedule public meetings on those holidays. There are about 15 of them each year, and so it makes for a more complex scheduling picture. Additionally, with this calendar, we're hoping to be more proactive. So each year, the clerk's office is pulling you multiple times per year to schedule retreats and other special meetings, and so this calendar is an attempt to avoid some of that and help hopefully you plan your lives and also help our internal timelines by having those dates determined further in advance. Lastly, we're sharing this physical space with the Development Commission and the Planning Policy Commission, now that we're, all three of us are meeting in person again. And so, being able to sort of play with the puzzle pieces of our meetings in advance is valuable. So Chris Grabowski, thank you to Chris, he made this puzzle work. So the calendar that is in your meeting packet tonight makes adjustments for those cultural and religious holidays, legal holidays. We made some adjustments for Election Day. We avoided the 3rd of July. So we tried to be thoughtful with how we adjusted meetings. If possible, if there was a holiday that fell into Monday, we just moved everything a day if possible, but we focused on moving your meetings to Mondays and Tuesdays as much as possible, to try and keep the meetings towards the front end of the week. You will see some occasional Wednesdays as well. Let's see here. Some of the meeting dates that I wanted to make sure that you took note of, we anticipate a few additional meetings, and there could be more, for the Title 18 update, so there are two additional PDEC meetings scheduled in the first quarter. We have built in two additional Committee of the Whole meetings, one for the CIP process in May and one for the mid-by-budget in October. We also scheduled Committee of the Holes each month of the year. The council rules say that they'll not be held in months where there are community listening sessions, but from a planning perspective, we are finding that it is helpful to have those as a release valve each month, and meetings can be canceled if there are a lack of agenda items. We also scheduled three council retreats. Those are on Saturdays in January, May, and July, so I'd like you to take note of those. And lastly, the community listening session. So those were a new meeting format this past year. We held a meeting in the Highlands and in the Talus community. The council rules anticipated four of those meetings a year, with three being off-site. And after holding those meetings and sort of observing the unique attributes of them and the planning and resources needed, we'd like to propose two in 2023. We're looking at locations in the central Issaquah and Newport neighborhoods, and we've selected two Thursdays, one in March and one in October, to hold those meetings. If you approve the calendar tonight, we will be bringing the council rules back to sort of back out the specific date reference to the number of listening sessions each year so that there could be some flexibility from year to year in how many of those are scheduled. So something to think about or to share with you, if you approve the calendar tonight, we would proceed with it. You will receive WebEx meeting invites, as you have for the past few years. If we have a lack of agenda items for any one of these meetings, the meeting would be canceled. If there was a need for an additional special meeting, we would pull you, just as we have before. If there was a request to change one of these meeting dates, we would need the approval of the council, so we would bring an agenda bill forward, hopefully on your consent calendar to authorize that change, because you're taking action collectively to adopt the schedule tonight. As I mentioned, if, with approval tonight, you will expect to see a consent calendar item on your January 3 meeting, making those minor, sort of conforming changes to the council rules, and you will be expecting then to see some WebEx invites. I did want to make a comment that the current platform that we're using, WebEx Events, is being no longer supported by WebEx in first quarter '23, so we'll be shifting to their replacement product, which is called WebEx Webinar, which will look really similar, but you may notice some differences, including in the invitations you receive. Also, just a request to please notify the clerk's office and the council president of, and city administrator of any planned travel in '23, so that we can make sure and consider your absence excused, and we can also help mitigate any issues that could come up with quorum of the standing committee meetings, since those have three attendees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from city council? Looking at Councilmember Joe, don't see questions there. Oh, council president?
Yes, I noticed there are two, let's see, two conflicts with the Development Commission on July 5th and September 6th. Is there a plan for modifications to those? I assume we're not going to both be trying to have a meeting in the same room at the same time.
Yes, and one of the benefits with looking at this far in advance is we, we are communicating with their staff liaison, so we'll try and reschedule if they're, they often are not needing both of their monthly meetings, so we will hopefully work with them to reschedule. We do also have Tippett's Manor as an option if needed, if we can't avoid having both meetings on the same night.
Any other questions? And if not, would someone entertain a motion? Question. Deputy Council President Hall?
Can you go into, I really appreciate hearing from staff, the burden, the administrative burden behind, you know, putting together these listening sessions and making sure they're done perfectly, and that's why we've kind of gone down to two. Can you kind of go into that a little bit more in depth? Because my initial reaction is that seems very low, so I really want to understand more from staff's side what it takes to make those successful.
Sure, and this, you know, there is certainly flexibility here. I will say that, and I think having the dates in advance will be helpful, but there is coordination needing, needed to determine a location, to mobilize staff to determine a relevant agenda, to come up with that additional support, so things like, you know, the food, the sort of social element of the event and to do the noticing. I see City Administrator Bob Quitz has his mic up, so he might have something more to add, but that was our thought. Let's do two of them well, really put a lot of our energy behind those two events. I think from my perspective, you know, we had some good attendance and some, some good content at the two that were held this year, so let's, let's do two well.
City Administrator?
Let's do two well.
And, mayor, is your mic up? I think they're great. I attended one, not both, but I thought the attendance was great, but also in the light of going to where the people are and not making them always come to us, we have lots of opportunities to go to homeowners' meetings and events that are happening all through the community, so I don't want those listening to think this is the only time the council goes out to listen. But this is a very structured time that the council goes out to listen, so this is in addition to all the other opportunities that you have. Questions? And if no more questions, is there a motion? Make sure, Councilmember Joe is okay? Council President?
I move to adopt the proposed 2023 City Council Calendar.
So a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Deputy Council President. Okay, let's start with the motion maker, Council President.
Thank you. I have several commentary's on this. First of all, I really love that we're getting a calendar in advance. I really hope that this streamlines our meeting. I mean, that just, the overarching perspective on all of this is absolutely appreciation. I have a few areas of quibbles. First, I hadn't really thought through it, but as much as we have adopted a religious and cultural holidays calendar, I think there are three other dates and maybe more that we just shouldn't expect people to turn up. One of those you mentioned was Election Day, the other is Halloween. Neither of the two of those have scheduled meetings on this calendar, but the third one is Valentine's Day. And I don't say that because I want to go out with my husband and all of that, I say that because I don't think we should expect community members to give up on a family holiday in order to meet with their council and provide perspective on that. So I think we should look to either add those officially as dates, or at least look for alternatives to Valentine's Day for 2023 and consider going forward. So that's the first. The second is the community listening sessions. I think we just got started on this and didn't really have an opportunity to do it in an efficient way, and that was what I was looking forward to in seeing this calendar, is because we could have dates ahead of time, we wouldn't have to do as much give and take in trying to get everything scheduled. much give and take in trying to get everything scheduled. And additionally, you know, Deputy Council President Hall and I had been talking already about, you know, what could this look like for 2023? And we had come up with a few different options, one which wouldn't be officially ours, but the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board has asked to create a listening session where we would attend as well as the school board members. And so that's one that may end up getting put out there without asking us necessarily. So that would be something additional on the calendar. But the other thing we were thinking about is in addition to or maybe instead of some of those neighborhood locations, we might look at working with some of the affinity groups around town, such as the Senior Center or the Chamber of Commerce. And so I think those present really great opportunities to bring people together, not necessarily because of where they live, but who they engage with and the topics that they might have as important topics. So I think I'm leaning more toward three sessions, potentially with one or two affinity groups and one or two neighborhood locations. But I would love to hear what the other council members have to say on this, just kind of throwing out some thoughts of ways that we could do this that don't necessarily require us to be, find a neighborhood location, but instead engage with an affinity group in a way that, you know, might meet with their needs as well. Thanks.
Other thoughts and comments? Oh, that was a tie. I'm giving it to the lady. Sorry, gentlemen. Councilmember DeMichele?
I don't have a response to those questions. I did just want to know, I put all of the dates on my calendar today, this afternoon. So I was very pleased to see us honoring the work of the Equity Board and noticing that we are accommodating holidays other than Christian holidays. That I think this is a really important message to our community that we are open and welcoming to everyone. So I just, I just wanted to put that in because going through month by month, it was like, oh, oh, this is being accommodated, that's being accommodated, that's great, absolutely great work. So I think that Council President Walsh raises some really good questions. I want to think about it a little bit more. But I know the proposal from the youth group is one that I would love to participate in and possibly they would put that on and we would attend it. So, yeah, but I think there's probably some more thinking we can do about some of those ideas. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I too was pretty excited to see all of the new and diverse holidays on the calendar. I thought that was very exciting to see it become real. But I like the idea of affinity groups, and I think some of the things that Mayor Paul, you talked about with HOA meetings, those are in effect actually affinity groups. So it's maybe, and the youth group. So it's about looking at things through a broader lens. And then does the entire council need to go to every session? Or do we kind of break that up so that we have more capacity? So just some more things to think about. I like, I really like the idea of affinity groups as well as neighborhoods. But I think as we start to schedule that, looking at that maybe a little bit differently might be very helpful. So and then, of course, so super cool to have the whole year laid out ahead of time. So thank you to the clerk's office.
Other thoughts, comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I would support a, I don't know if we have to formalize in a motion, but I would support not having meetings on Valentine's Day and Halloween and whichever third one, which I'm forgetting at the moment. Also, because I think if we don't have them as holidays, then there would also be potentially volunteer committee meetings on those days. And again, I don't know that that's, I think that might be a day that they would like to be with their families. So I would, I would support those. I think that was a great suggestion in addition to the calendar. Really appreciate all the work that went into this calendar, generally supportive. And then as far as the additional listening sessions, I think for many of the purposes that the listening session exists to address, we could go to those community groups. So I have met, for example, with one of the youth groups in town, and in that case, I went to their meeting and listened to what they were talking about and had some questions for them on an issue that was topical at the time. But I think maybe we can organize with them because really the point of those listening sessions is to not have people come to us, is to go to them. And so, you know, I think an extension of that could be if we're really interested or a group of us is interested in meeting with a group in town, then we ask them how they would best, how we can best interact with them and potentially go to them. And then for, maybe there's a future listening session, but if it's really for us to go listen to them, I think we could organize it that way. So I am supportive of the two, doing the two well in the neighborhoods and then going forward with individual sort of less, yeah, more organized jointly sessions as needed with or as desired by other groups in town.
I'm going to bring the city clerk into the conversation for a second. So this is a cultural calendar. I'm wondering if there is a way for council to achieve their goals of not scheduling meetings on Election Night, Halloween, and Valentine's Day, but to allow the flexibility for you to do it if you need to. So not putting it as a no-meeting date on a cultural calendar, but putting it in your rules or procedure that the council's preference is not to have community meetings on these three dates for these reasons. That way, I'm worried about going back to the Equity Board and adding to their work, but I think you can enhance it. So I just wanted to see if the city clerk has a response to that.
Mayor, I think the beauty of the council approving this calendar is it's giving you some flexibility. I don't, I'm not even sure that we, we could certainly formalize it in the rules, or we could just make, I think at this point, there's just one modification that would need to be made to this calendar to move that February 14th Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting. That's just something that you could do as part of the adoption is just direct that that date be avoided.
And potentially, is it possible for the council, when they look at their rules or procedure at their retreat, that they specify where their intent and their desire not to have meetings on those days? So that there is some rationale somewhere that shows that you would prefer not to. But as a council, if you had a very burning issue and you wanted to use Halloween, you could use it. But at least everybody knows that your head is around trying not to have the community have to come to meetings on those nights. So possibility. Make the one move, February 14th, and then show your intent in your rules. So future conversation. Any more comments? The two issues that Council President Hunt has brought up is additional days to not schedule meetings and also two sessions moving up to three sessions. Anybody else providing some comments on that? Deputy Council President?
I would like to see three listening sessions if possible. If the council feels strongly in agreement with staff that maybe we just do two well, and maybe we explore some of these other new ways in 2023, then I would just ask that maybe we have some flexibility in case the stars align and we say, let's go for another one this month, and everything just works out perfectly. Because I do think too, is a little bit on the low side. But who knows? Yeah, if we're able to explore this new opportunity and really kind of institutionalize it a little bit more, whereas we report back to each other and we're all kind of in the same page about what's going on in the community and what are we hearing from these different affinity groups, maybe that'll meet our needs. So again, would like to officially move to three, but happy to stay at two if that's the will of the rest of the council.
A couple of other council members haven't weighed in yet. Councilmember Marts, did you have any thoughts? And Councilmember Joe, did you have any thoughts?
Nope.
Good for you. Councilmember Joe?
I'm just happy to go to all the meetings that we scheduled.
Great answer.
Two or three, I'm just happy to get out in the community as much as the rest of the council would like to see fit.
Thank you very much. So city clerk, a question for the motion maker. The motion was to adopt the proposed 2023 City Council Calendar. If there is going to be a change on the February 14th date, does that need to be included in the motion?
Okay. Yeah, I'd suggest offering an amendment.
Okay. So let me ask the question. What would, would the amendment be to avoid the February 14th or to ask the administration to reschedule the February 14th date?
The clerk's office would love to have a date selected for that meeting. I see two alternative dates, which are Wednesday, February 8th, and Monday, February 27th.
So the amendment to the main motion would be to move the infrastructure meeting of February 14th to?
Okay, so I will make an amendment to move the meeting on the February 14th to Monday, February 27th.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ray?
Do we have an underlined motion there?
Yes. Yeah, move to approve the calendar. So this is an amendment to the calendar. And then we'll vote on the amended calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
We're the second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the amendment, which is to move a February 14th meeting date to a date, second date in February. Discussion? Nope. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The amendment carries seven and no. And would the motion maker consider, and the second consider, adopt the proposed amended 2023 City Council calendar? Is that necessary?
That's how it stands now.
Okay. So just adding the word proposed 2023 amended City Council calendar. Move her in second, agree with that. Thank you. Discussion on the main motion? If there's any additional discussion. Although it has been moved and seconded to adopt the proposed 2023 amended City Council calendar, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Councilmember Joe. All those opposed? And that also carries seven and no. Thank you very much. I did want to really thank our city clerk's office for working on this and just know that when I'm out in the region talking with mayors, I've already been requested for this calendar. And also let them know that our calendar isn't their calendar. It's your own community's calendar. So great job. I had hoped that at SEA we would be able to talk a bit, a few of these equity successes that we are initiatives that we're having here, but didn't get an opportunity this year. So next year, for sure, I will be highlighting some of the great work that the city of Issaquah is doing. The next item of business this evening is good of the order. Are there any items for good of the order? Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. We, or I distributed to the council earlier today a revised version of the 2023 Eastside Transportation Partnership State Legislative Agenda and cover letter. It's a long title. And for the purpose of getting any input from you at all, just to give you some context for this, last year, the, in early 2022, the legislature passed the Move Ahead Washington legislation, really historic, $16.8 billion that is invested. And so in light of that, the Eastside Transportation Partnership agreed that they wanted to completely rewrite their legislative priorities. Part of the purpose of this document is to set a platform for future legislative requests. And so we removed a lot of the specific language in it. It is a more general document with the idea that we are now framing up perhaps requests in next legislative district or two to four years out. So that is the purpose of the document. And so let me ask if anyone has thoughts about this. Eastside Transportation Partnership, our next meeting is Friday morning at 7:30 in the morning.
Any council member questions or comments? Excuse me, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this to council's attention for feedback. I appreciate a lot of the stuff that's in here, especially a lot of the stuff about environmental stewardship and reducing emissions and improving multimodal transport, transportation options. And a lot of stuff in here is really great. One thing that I saw that I thought you might consider adjusting is, so the upgrades to state highway and regional corridors throughout King County. That section is looking to utilize, it says utilize its next round of investments to address interchange improvements, safety and capacity improvements, and studies for regional corridors experiencing increasing congestion and delays due to rapid population growth. So I thought in that section, you might put studies first as a separate thing and then subsequently those improvements, just to make sure that the funding is going to those corridors that are prioritized and most likely to have the desired effect. Because with rapid population growth, there can also be induced demand after increasing the capacity of these roadways, meaning that as you increase lanes on the highways, for example, more people will take that route and it can actually increase congestion. So just to avoid that particular issue to make sure that it's worded sort of the opposite of the way it is now with the improvements and then the studies to have the studies and then the subsequent improvements to those prioritized by the studies, I think would address that concern. Thanks.
Like right there, move that up. Great, I will take that back. In fact, I'll send it to him later this evening.
Additional comments?
Any additional?
Not seeing any. Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Anyone else for good of the order?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. I'll just mention a few meetings that are coming up. December 7th is a special city council meeting at 8:00 AM at Tippett's Creek Manor. We will be meeting with Issaquah's Legislative Delegation to discuss the city's legislative priorities. And the remainder of the December city council and committee meetings are canceled to allow for a winter break. So our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, January 3rd. The next item of business on the agenda is executive session. So as earlier announced, there is an executive session scheduled for this evening to discuss pending potential litigation. Per RCW, 42.30, 0.110 per N1 per NI. And the item is expected to take a total of 45 minutes, and no action is anticipated in open session. So as a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 9:07 PM. Councilmember Joe? Yep?
Before we go to executive session, I understand the topic is from shelter. And as noted before, I won't be able to be able to participate in the executive session as my employer has filed an amicus brief in the case. So I will be logging off when you go to executive session.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. For those participating virtually, anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it's reconvened. So city clerk, looking for confirmation of when to proceed?